Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Good evening. Welcome to the Town and Conquer Planning Board Meeting of April 19th, 2022. And this meeting is being recorded. We will begin tonight's discussion on some administrative business. The first thing to regarding whether the planning board will take positions on the annual town meeting articles, number 24 and number 25. 25 pertains to the the Asabet Bluffs funding, I believe, and 24, Elizabeth, that was the
Affordable Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, but first I need you to take roll call.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the reminder. Since we are virtual, yes, I'll go around the room. Linda.
Here.
Nathan.
Here.
Kate.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
And I'm Burton and I'm here. All right, so we've got five of us. And beginning with, to reiterate, we begin the first agenda item is to discuss whether the planning board wants to take position on Articles 24 and 25. So for people that are newer to the planning board, it is often the case that committees will, with respect to articles that are sort of specifically within their purview or generally within their purview may make their position known at town meeting as to whether they recommend affirmative action or no action. And I can say, having participated recently or not participated, attended recently some of the select board meetings where they have to go through, the select board has to go through all of the various articles and take positions. So they have a giant role in this. It occurred to me that there's a couple of articles here that it may be of interest to the planning board to recommend, make a recommendation one way or the other. Elizabeth, do you want to describe Article 24? If I can put you in the spot.
Sure, hang on one second. I was actually going to bring them up for you.
Okay, thanks so much.
If I can find it, there we go. So Article 24 is just to have the town appropriate or transfer $500,000 to put in the municipal affordable housing trust fund and from free cash. And this is just to support affordable housing projects that the Affordable Housing Trust may be pursuing.
And to comment why I think this is germane to what the planning board does, a little history here. So previously, we didn't have a housing trust fund. And so we had issues of, for example, when we required of a PRD, you know, a percentage of affordable units or for, you know, a mixed use development percentage of affordable units, there was no way to have a part of a unit accounted for, right? So now, now we have developers that if they've got a half unit or something that they're on the hook for, they can, they've got to contribute funds. And now we have a trust fund that that can go into. And mainly, also, this will be a vehicle to catch the funds that would be raised if the town's successful in obtaining approval from the state legislature in having a deeds transfer fee that goes towards affordable housing. So, so this comes in into our, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund comes into our deliberations directly in terms of projects that we might be approving or the funds would be going into it, but also just generally speaking, you know, I know a lot of what we do. We consider whether a proposal or particular project will contribute to affordable housing or might further put pressure on us in terms of whether we're meeting the 40B 10% threshold. So I thought that we as a planning board may be interested in this because through the, through the raising of money, obviously, this will go towards creating affordable housing, which may help us with in terms of meeting that 10% threshold for, for being able to avoid unfriendly 40B developments.
With that is Oh, no, that's fantastic. I would also add that what the creation of the municipal affordable housing trust did and by putting money into the trust allows the town to be more immediately responsive to affordable housing opportunities, whether that may be an expiring deed restriction where the town can purchase a, you know, expiring deed restriction to keep a unit on the subsidized housing inventory or such as the Asabet River Bluff, if there's an opportunity presents itself to purchase property for an affordable housing project. The trust and having money in the trust allows the town to be more responsive and not have to wait for town meeting and and all the delays that can go with that.
Right. And maybe just a final food for thought. Thank you, Elizabeth, is that, you know, as we all know all too well, that our efforts to require a right of first refusal on some lots and the 1440 Main Street in accordance with what was required of us under the zoning bylaws as they existed at that time, that was found to be an overreach. Not within our authority under the subdivision control law. And so that is no longer an effective measure for creating affordable housing. So we know we have to look to other measures to help create it. And this is part of it. All right. Does anybody want to feel, want to speak up and say whether they think we should be proposing that we support the passage of this, take no action, or be silent on it? Because of course, that's an option as well.
I propose that we vote for affirmative action or recommend affirmative action on Article 24.
On 24, okay. Thank you, Linda, for kicking off the discussion. And Haley, Nathan, Kate, any, how do you, Haley gives a thumbs up. Nathan or Kate, do you have a view on this?
I'm in support of it as well.
Okay. You are unmute.
I'm in support as well. And thank you, Burton, for bringing this to our attention.
You're welcome. Great. So I hope I wasn't too candid in providing my background. I am in support of it as well. And so what I would then recommend is that we, I'd like to propose a motion that the planning board recommend for, for affordable, excuse me, recommend for affirmative action at town meeting, Article 24. And Elizabeth, take whatever steps, you know, to provide, inform the town moderator as such.
Well, so Linda, was your, your first comment a motion or was that just a statement?
Oh.
I, it's okay. I thought it was a motion, but I didn't preface it by saying it was a motion. So I perhaps
That's okay. So I had already wrote that down, Burton. So if you'd like to second
I'll second Linda's motion.
Okay.
Linda's motion.
And then take a roll call vote. That would be great.
Okay, so going around the room, I'm going to start with Kate.
Yes.
Nate, Nathan, sorry.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we are unanimous on that. Now, the next one, I will tell you that there's been a lot of discussion on. This is the Article 25, the Asabet Bluff Preservation Project. There's two elements of it. If you are at town meeting, which I'm sure you all will be. There's the $500,000 funding from the town as well, direct from the general fund, which is Article 25. And there is also funding, a million dollars of funding within the Community Preservation Committee's article, which is, I believe, Article 26. I'm very familiar with the Community Preservation Committees. This article, I'm a little less familiar on, but I am comfortable sort of summarizing it as saying that this funding is intended to closing gap that this would be through, I believe, raised through a bond to close any gap in the purchase price between what's raised by conservation groups or other groups or housing groups towards the purchase of this, of this land. There was a lot of discussion about this and the CPC article at the select board level, concerned that there was, that the the document of understanding that's been entered into or by the town as well and town conservation groups isn't setting aside enough affordable housing. Given the investment by the town here, but let me give you a quick summary of what, where this project stands right now. This is seven acres, a significant amount of which is within land, land that's, there's a hundred foot setback from the Asabet River. There was a proposal originally that this could be developed at, well, it's going on the market and could be developed as a subdivision, I believe, probably for about seven lots, seven houses. There was a proposal that the select board sort of bought into in last fall that this could be developed as a PRD with a couple of units of affordable housing created by the developer, if they allowed about 13 units of housing to be developed. Neighborhood groups were opposed to that much housing going into, into this particular parcel. And conservation groups who were originally engaged with the seller and got them to offer the town the opportunity to buy the land had stepped in and, and they want to preserve six acres for conservation, set aside one acre for affordable housing, utilizing the existing two family house on the parcel and building three additional units of affordable housing. That is reflected in the DOU that was entered into by the town and the conservation groups have gone off and done some fundraising on that and raised a kind of an astounding amount locally, largely, I believe, within West Concord of almost a million dollars, at least at last count of a couple of weeks ago to go towards this purchase of this property. So there, the town has also applied for a grant from, I believe it's, Elizabeth, is that a federal or a state program?
The, it's the Land and Water Conservation Fund. I think it's a federal program.
Okay, a federal program of $400,000, $500,000. If the tenant achieves that grant and because of the, effectively, the the surprisingly large amount of private fundraising that has happened. It's likely that this funding would come back to the town, but it needs to be appropriated at town meeting so that the trend, so that the purchase can close because the purchase has to close because the federal grant is a reimbursement. It's not, they don't provide you the funds upfront. I will not be coy. I am a big proponent of this project. I think it's an amazing piece of property. I think it's a great opportunity for five units of affordable housing very close to the West Concord Junction train, or the West Concord Train Station. It's in fact, a beautiful walk to, if that was your commute to get to the train station. It is a property that is along a wild and scenic river, and I think it really is a unique and one of the final opportunities within certainly Concord South of Brute Two to preserve a large piece of open space. So I'm in favor of it. But that all said, how does the board feel about supporting this recommend, making a recommendation? Oh, I just want to take a moment and comment that we have Kristen joining us. So Elizabeth, Kristen's now here. Does the board feel like they want to make no recommendation, make a recommendation for affirmative action or no action?
So can I make one plug as the town planner?
Of course.
Marcia, Marcia and I feel that this is probably one of the biggest and actual partnership, a true partnership between open space and affordable housing that we can remember. Not just a housing project where here's a little open space and the open space people say, yeah, that's great. Or I'm not sure there's ever been an open space project where somebody said, hey, affordable housing people, do you want a unit? So there have been comments made that why only five units and there should be more. Our, our response to that is that it's five units or no units. This is, as Burton said, a very beautiful desirable piece of property right on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And it's our strong opinion that this project represents the sheer definition of compromise. Nobody is 100% happy. But everybody is in support of this project in some manner. And that's what a compromise is. So I'll get off my soapbox now, too.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate that. And on the affordable, so because if there's been any criticism at all of this, it's been that there could be a more affordable housing, I would point out. There is an existing two family house on the property which is not currently affordable housing in terms of, in terms of being on our subsidized housing inventory. That would be eligible for, that would be turned into affordable housing. And then there would be three additional units built when those funds, you know, if and when they become available through things like Article 24, the $500,000 we just recommended for the Affordable Housing Trust. Okay, Sue, I see your hand raised, but I first, and I thank you for weighing in. I just want to first go around the room with the board and see if anybody has any thoughts on this one. Haley gives us the visual thumbs up. Okay, support.
I'm in support of it. I'm glad to see the preservation of that, that land so close to the center of West Concord, like you said. So, and to have five units there would be, you know, as you said, right on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, so direct access to or mostly direct access to the train station, I think is great.
Okay, thank you, Nate. And thank you, Kate, for your nod. And Kristen, any, any comments?
I agree too. I think it's really helpful to hear from both of you about kind of a little bit about what went into it and, and that this is what we are trying to do with having committees work together. So thank you for sharing that part.
Yeah, Kristen, thanks. And it wasn't just committees. It was, it was also the community and these, I mean, we benefit from having these, some amazing land trusts in town, both Sudbury Valley Trustees and the Concord Land Trust and, and they all engaged in what I think was a pretty productive public process, which just even in my time on the planning board was, I compare it to what happened with the acquisition of the land at Warner's Pond where through falling through the cracks, they didn't bring in the affordable housing people at the juncture that they were required to do per our, our general bylaws and, and that, and that's created a hard, you know, they've been trying to create affordable housing there. We've seen some of that. We've seen the, the application for a, a two unit PRD there, and that hasn't gone forward because of just the cost of building on that particular lot. This case is an example where folks got it right. They engaged with the right people upfront and they got it done. So at any rate.
I would also like to put a very strong plug and thank you to the property owners.
Yeah.
And, and, and their real estate broker who, if it wasn't for them agreeing to, you know, different timetables and working with the community. They, they could have easily just put it on the market and it would have been gone. So I want to make sure that they're clearly recognized.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in any of those discussions, but certainly to be able to get somebody to take a very valuable piece of property and keep it off the market for a year while we, while the town gets its ducks in a row. And it's a property owner who has a long history and a lot of holdings in town. It does speak highly and, and their, and their broker for helping bring the parties together. So thanks. All right. It sounds like, Linda, we haven't heard from you.
You know, I think it's great that we're not looking at another, you know, standard subdivision. So I think that this, this is a major win-win. And I think the planning board's in a great position to say that that this project offers balance in terms of what the community is looking for in terms of open space resources and affordable housing. So I think, you know, that's something that the planning board, I think, has a stake in this because we, and we can add that value by saying that we appreciate the balance as it is in this current proposal. So I'm in favor of it.
And Linda, I may just rope you into writing a sort of a statement that we would, Elizabeth, help me understand. So we will be making a recommendation for affirmative action and I I don't believe we're going to take up people's time by standing up and making a statement as a board at town meeting. But can we put a statement in the hands of Carmen, the town moderator, to say why we support it? And if so, can we just quote from the minutes of what Linda just said?
Yes. Yes. So I already informed the town moderator that the board was going to be discussing these two. And that I already have Linda's comment that, you know, the, the planning board has a stake in various open space and housing projects. And this project provides the appropriate balance between open space resources and affordable housing and the planning board, I'm going to assume, is recommending affirmative action.
Yeah. And let me go ahead and make it that motion that we recommend affirmative action for, for Article 25. Do I have a second?
Second. I got Kate.
Oh, you got Kate. You heard Kristen, I think. I think you heard Chris, Kristen, 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 excuse me, Kristen. Okay, let me start with Linda.
Yes.
Yes, Haley.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
And Nate.
Yes.
Ma'am, yes. So that's two affirmative unanimous votes to support those two articles. All right. Thank you very much. Sue, you had your hand raised. You took it down. Was there any further comment you wanted to make?
Sue Fosch and 19 Sunnyside Lane. I was only going to comment on the Jero land as an example of open space with an itty bitty housing component. But of course, that wasn't designed that way from the beginning. So it doesn't really qualify as, as what Elizabeth was talking about.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah. You know that history well, I'm sure. Okay. I think that brings us to our next item, which is the draft site plan rules and regulations. Elizabeth, thank you for sending those around. Elizabeth, you have any remarks you want to make about those before we?
Yes. Sorry, it's, it's been a while where I've had to like two minutes and participate at the same time. So I'm rusty. But hopefully, you know, that won't be long. Yes. Anne is here from M A P C. And I think Anne's gonna give a little bit of information about the just general site plan review and the research she's done as far as the question the boards has raised in the past about shells and mays and shoulds as they are in rules and regs. And then I'm going to bring up the rules and regs, the draft that you got, which apologize that things are so late. I don't expect the board to have gone through them with a fine tooth comb. And I surely hope Linda did not spend a lot of time editing it because it needs a lot of help. But Anne and Amanda, the sustainability director, and I met today and we have, I'll lay out the course of action that we have. But first I'm going to turn it over to Anne.
Okay, great. Thank you. And you've got the floor. And you are unmute, one way or another. Your nurturing up is muted on Zoom, so it's maybe your headset. Yes, we can't hear you now.
My headphones that work about every fifth or don't work every fifth meeting.
We can hear you fine without them.
That's great. Thank you. So I was just saying that I was at your last meeting and we chatted a little bit about moving forward on this. And, and I was particularly mindful of one of the questions that Haley raised about sort of asking, why would you go one direction or another? I think we were talking about Watertown and Lexington as sort of sample regulations. And so I just, we, we have headed in the Lexington direction that for people who are familiar with those regulations, these, I think, will look pretty familiar. And I think our thinking about it was really, has to do with the status of site plan review altogether, which I think we talked about a little bit. And I think Elizabeth shared a memo from the citizens, citizen planner training collaborative, but essentially recognizing that site plan review doesn't have status in the state laws and that the planning board, you know, but it's not the same as, as a special permit where you have absolute ability to deny something so that where it's on a little less firm ground in terms of how, how much you can require. I think we thought that the Lexington language, because it is so comprehensive, was really the right direction to go with that in mind to be very explicit about really all the things you care about and all the things they should look at. And as Elizabeth said, and she's done a lot of work on this, it's, it's not in a final draft, but I think I'll let Elizabeth go through it, but I think the idea was to really try and come up with something where it would be completely clear what the planning board's expectations are and that it would cover the kinds of things that are vaguely referenced in the bylaw when it says sustainability to try and draw that out further and, and all the other things that people need to think about. So I'll leave it at that unless people have questions, but I'll let Elizabeth take, take, go forward.
Hey. Question, I guess, to that point, Anne, this is great. I skimmed through it. So I certainly haven't digested it all yet, but obviously saw that's the direction it was going. Looks, you know, very comprehensive, which is great. I guess I still struggle to truly understand, right? Like, how do we make sure as a board, and I haven't read the citizen planner thing that you sent across, Elizabeth, but you know, that we don't end up, you know, putting this all together and then end up at the end being told like, oh, there's nothing that's actually like a true requirement in here. And I guess I'm trying to understand like, is what Watertown did, just so for my own sake, like, is that like technically not even legal? Is that what you're saying? Or how are they, how are like, and I've heard that Cambridge and some other towns have done similar lead stuff and Amanda's cab. One of, one of the cab members was referencing some other towns that he thought had similar lead requirements. So I'm just trying to like, regardless of what we end up with. Trying to understand like, what's the true teeth we're able to have, right?
Very, yeah, good question. So I'll tell you what I know. I actually had a colleague talk to the Watertown planners to understand that because I think, I mean, you read it and it does look like you can require it. And what they said in their case is that there is no case where they have site plan review that they, it isn't also a special permit process. And so that's kind of how they could do it. It makes it look like it's required under site plan review, but it, the, the actual absolute requirement comes through the special permit. I mean, I've looked at Cambridge's language. They simply have a separate ordinance that's all about sustainable housing. It's, it's so I think that's kind of a separate example. I, Lexington, I think, is the other one that I, and I talked to the planners there because I wanted to understand it as well because I I believe I understand what the regs say. And then you see language like that. And they have an interesting situation where they have bylaws for site plan review and then another bylaw for site plan review and special permit. And, and so the site plan review bylaw basically acknowledges that you, we can't really, it's not designed to prohibit anything. And then they simply combine all the site plan review and special permit into one process. Both in the bylaw and for the board. So I asked them about that. And I think it's a matter, honestly, of tone that if push came to shove, they might have to acknowledge that, well, actually, yeah, this is only under site plan review. So maybe we can't force you to do this. And I honestly, I think that's, so I think kind of the answer is push, if when push does come to shove, there are real limits to what you can require. But to me, that's the reason to write this language fairly specifically to have a lot of shells, even if not every shell survives in the end. Is, is to kind of push the limits of what you can achieve. And I mean, if you get a chance to read the citizens planner training collaborative, I mean, part of what they say is there's something you really don't want to allow. In this case, I think it's things you want to require. Like, look, look at your special permit process. That, that's what has teeth. So, but, but I think look, look at your special special permit process. That's what has teeth. So but but I think you have a you have a site plan review process. And hopefully, they at least at this point would be to make it as as strong and as good as it can be. That would be my take.
So and Haley, I'd like to also add, you know, the town of Concord has had site plan review with no rules and regs, even though the bylaw references for I it's got to be 50 years, you know, at least at least 40 years and have never had rules and regs. And the town has consistently advanced the site plan criteria and advanced, I'm going to say, the the level of site plans that get generated and approved. I think, you know, a good example is is even the Concord Children's Center daycare. That was just site plan review. There's no special permit required. And that's, you know, we're required because of the zoning act. But through that site plan review process with the planning board, a lot of different elements were changed for that project for better. And that has happened numerous times that I can think of for commercial projects as well. What developing these rules and regs and is putting more specifics and more and I and I don't want to say criteria because you have the criteria in the zoning bylaw. What the rules and regulations do is gives the developers that window of these are the things that you you have to think about. And with the rules and regs, if there is something that you that says shall and you can't do it, at least through the rules and regs, you now have a process where somebody specifically has to request a waiver and give you the reasons why, instead of just saying, well, we just didn't want to do that. Because, I mean, I think there have been there have not been very many cases where in I'm going to say in the recent, let's say, in the last four years, when it comes with sustainability, the planning board, even when you're not the permit granting authority, maybe the zoning board of appeals was that, as Anne said, the planning board does that pushback and you you have affected change. You affected change with 13B Commonwealth Ave. Even even affecting change at Mills like school. Even though it's just an EV outlet for, you know, for the four units, they they at least now have one. It's so I think the having actual rules and regs in place establishes that process where it's now not just an afterthought is criteria H in the zoning bylaw. It's specifically outlined in these rules and regs, and they have to specifically say why they're not going to meet something. Does that answer your question? I don't.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I have a I have a question related to that.
I'm down in my basement with no wood stove anymore going. So my hands are freezing. Go ahead. Sorry, Kristen.
No, I hear you. I turned off my heat also because I'm like, it's April. And anyways, so you use shall and should throughout and in, you know, building and electrical codes, they use shall or must. And there's very distinct meaning in those in those codes. What what is the distinction between shall and should in the language that you've written so far?
So in the language that we have, I wouldn't put any I wouldn't put any thought into the sap shells and should currently in this draft. So I will be, you know, working with Anne and Amanda and so I don't know. I don't know how specific I didn't expect the board to specifically tonight go through each one of those sections. I still have, you know, the whole procedural part of finding your filing, your application and legal notices on all of that. I think what we wanted to gather tonight, whether there were, you know, I think it was Kate had provided some additional information on outdoor lighting that I want to put in. Nathan provided information, you know, about EV charging. And Anne and Amanda and I were going to look at that. But specifically, was there anything that, you know, we haven't included? I also think that for these types of rules and regs, they're incredibly dense. And I'd like to look at ways to include graphics for certain things. You know, definitely the lighting. Anne is has some information to pull together about landscaping and parking lots. I think I've mentioned before, you have a landscape island for let's say, every 10 parking spaces, have there be some type of island? I know Maynard just recently adopted the park, you know, parking space size that if it's the end parking space next to an island, it actually has to be wider so that people aren't getting out of their car and stomping on the island. So there, you know, a couple of a couple of different things. And currently, the the language we pulled from Lexington, there's a lot of shall, I'm going to say overarching statements. And I think some of the things that the board has discussed in this previously were providing on certain elements, a couple of more specifics of the the landscape island and the parking lot for every 10 spaces, you know, show that. And if you can't do that, you have to say why. And, you know, a couple of other more specific things. But going through and cleaning up the form, the format and the difference between shall and should, or just making sure that language is consistent over in the next week and a half. And then take this draft and send it to all the different town staff. And if they want to take it to the boards and committees that they support, get input and then have a draft come back to the planning board for your May 24 meeting. And depending on how how diligent Anne and I and Amanda are pulling this together and how diligent I can get town staff to look at that and comment back to me, which sometimes is challenging. We may be at a point where I would look to actually open the required public hearing on May 24 and have the board start that public hearing process. And and just get this sent out to when it gets sent out to staff. And for that public hearing process, you know, there's certain, you know, certain developers in the community that I would look to get their input on as well.
And assuming you've copied some of this from Lexington directly, Kristen, just to to your question. Lexington had like a specific evaluation language that said shall basically is considered to be a minimum requirement when that word is used. And when it's not used, then it's not. But when when shall was used, you'd have to request a waiver or reason for why you couldn't meet that minimum. What do you think is good?
Hey, I see your hand raised.
I I'm not sure I understood part of the conversation earlier. I think it pertained to the authority that the planning board has to regulate on on some of these and to establish firm standards on it. So I I thought I heard the Anne, you say that like we sort of might as well like put these shells in, we're not we there's a question in our mind if we if it's actually within our authority, but we're just going to put them in and kind of see what we can get from it. And I might have misunderstood that. But I mean, I think I think that I I'd rather write this like within the firm bounds of of what we can do rather than feel like we're going to require applicants to like test us on it. Because we have had people drag us into court before and it's expensive and we don't want to do that. I mean, from my perspective. So did I misunderstand?
No. And before, yeah, before before Anne jumps in, it definitely, it's not a misunderstanding. It's it's an aspect of I'm going to say, lack of state law. So there there is no there's no state law or zoning act or mass general law that specifically deals with site plan review. Site plan review is something that I don't even know which town was the first one to come up with it, but it is a a process that communities, some communities started and and each town has just utilized this process called site plan review to have more input on you know, design and layout and function and all the other things you you currently look at when you look at site plan review. But it there, there's no regulatory authority under mass general law or the zoning act that deals with site plan review. So I'm going to say it's a process that has evolved through communities and evolved through the attorney general's office and evolved through the courts. You do have site plan review criteria in your zoning bylaw. And it is a process under the legal framework of Land Court. The the functions of the zoning act for communities, you know, size, bulk, scale, land use, traffic, emergency response, all of those things are elements of the purpose of zoning. So that's where site plan review has has made its its legal home to be able to if if a project comes through and it needs site plan review and there's just certain incredibly egregious, you know, problems with that. Communities do have the ability to deny a site plan review for a project. That 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 is still something you can do if somebody came in and 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 communities still have the ability through those those protections and purpose of the zoning act to condition projects. So somebody comes in and says, I just want, you know, wall packs and floodlights through, you know, all around my property. The planning board can condition that to say no, you're going to have dark sky friendly lighting and that's the condition of approval. It's it's those it's still those the gray zone of sustainability. Because sustainability hasn't been inserted into any mass general law or the zoning act yet. Where communities, and that's why some of the zoning that other communities have tried to pass, you know, where you can't, you have to, you know, know everything has to be fossil fuel free, or you can't extend, you know, gas, or that's why those things have currently not passed and is because there's still that disconnect between state law and what communities want to do. But the the whole process of zoning of site plan review, commu- communities still have the ability to deny a project. You you couldn't deny it if somebody came in and said, you know, well, I all of all of these homes, I I want to, you know, all of these people are master chefs and they all want natural gas. And so I'm extending the gas line. If it was just site plan, the planning board couldn't couldn't just deny the project because he would have to, you know, in your rules and regs, you can say, you know, you, this is the direction you want. And if somebody says, well, I can't do that. And here's why. That would be one of those gray areas where I I I would never advise the board to deny something based on that. Because it's still in that gray area under state law. But all the other items of site plan, traffic, size, bulk, scale, emergency services, all of those elements are elements that a board can deny site plan review on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. So so will we distinguish between the gray these two areas by using different language? Is that what we're saying? So in one case, it'll be shell. In another case, it should be well, but even favorably on your project if you do these things.
But even, you know, even a a shall with a waiver provision, that that just means that the the developer has to provide their, you know, their reasoning for why they don't want to do something. But in those really gray areas where I I don't think in the rules and regs, you can say, you know, all projects shall be fossil fuel free. It's currently there's
That's a tough one. I mean, I don't think, I don't, we're not, we've all learned our lesson, right? Like, everybody's learned their lesson on the fossil fuels side. So I don't know if we can use another example, maybe even of like something that's not related to like utility regulation, I guess.
So let's say, every every site plan shall only have above ground, low impact design to handle stormwater. And you could say that, you know, that that's a clear, you know, sustainable principle. And but a project may come in where, you know, how the size or shape or soil of the property or some where that that doesn't work. And it's a shell, but there's a waiver provision where they come in and say, okay, it's the size, the shape, and the soil isn't conducive of that. So we want to do this alternative type of low impact subsurface. We can't do the open swale or something like that. So I I still think you can have, you can have a shell with a waiver provision so long, I mean, so long as the board recognizes in the rules and regs that there's different situations for for every shell, doesn't matter what it is. There's a different situation where somebody may not be able to meet that. The reason they may not be able to meet it may be good, may be bad, may be valid. Maybe because they just don't want to, but at least they have to provide the reasonings why.
And I think that's Kate, you were sort of saying, are we, you know, are we being sort of disingenuous? So I think the idea is not to be disingenuous, but to but as Elizabeth says, really to put the onus on them rather than saying, we prefer this and we prefer that. So we'd say this is required, but acknowledging that waivers are possible so that there's a, you know, the shells can be there, but there can still be an escape valve for them. But I think it sets a very different tone about these. These are our expectations. But as Elizabeth says, there there may be, you know, there will be cases where expectations can't be met. And that's legitimate and something the board has to acknowledge.
But so not to not to, I won't lengthen this discussion anymore, but just to just to point out, the the board has nothing right now. The town has had nothing for and I'll figure out when site plan review was first adopted. But you know, these are this is going to turn out to be what I think and Anne can, you know, provide her opinion, pretty pretty in robust site plan rules and regs. And I think it really creates a a much stronger process, a much stronger message when you have projects that come in than what you than you what you currently have, which is applicants get to design and develop whatever they want. There's criteria A through E. No guidance on how they're supposed to meet it. And it just becomes a constant conversation through public hearing, public hearing, public hearing until hopefully, there's something that everybody wants. So anyways, so was there any anything else as far as the next steps for us will be to, you know, go through this, go through the information that some board members have provided? Correct. And as Kristen mentioned, talk about the the shall and the the shoulds and And um, I'll look at Lexington's language again, Haley, about what this shall mean and what this should mean. But then we would send this around to town staff and other stakeholders uh, and try and schedule the first public hearing for May 24th.
Yeah, I think that, um, yeah, just take a look at that Lexington language that, that's up top there. Cause I think that's super helpful to, for, for any applicant, right? As a, I think about putting their plans together. So they understand like, okay, what is this board considered to be like minimally acceptable um, from a sustainability perspective? And it clearly outlines, you know, the, the, the waiver variance process if, if needed. But um, I think it's, it's pretty helpful. I just was curious, Anne, um, to the extent in, in talking with other towns, um, which is awesome that you did that. What kind of struck me was like the, the perhaps, um, especially whether it's Throw Depot or any other, you know, village development that might happen like, um, that perhaps overwhelmingness of an application and, and all this sustainability stuff to think through. Like, do other towns use a third party um, reviewer specifically for sustainability? Or is it like their town sustainability director that kind of does that comprehensive review?
It's early, you're gonna be, I mean, I know, there aren't many communities that have anything as, as thorough as this and, and even, I, I just think it's not, it's early. So that's, I, I, I don't really have an answer for that, but I don't think there, that I, I haven't, I'm not aware of people doing sort of specific a peer review for sustainability.
Um, the one other thing I can add though Haley is, and it, it's just, it's, it's gonna take a little bit more work to tweak is when you take that, the Lexington, um, their, their actual bylaw, which is their site plan and special permit process, um, they have a, a really significant checklist. Um, and it goes through, um, like every one of those points that are in the rules and regs that the board saw becomes this checklist item in the checklist. Um, and Anne and I are still kind of looking that and seeing how it can be used. What we have talked about is it's, it's really extensive. I think it's like eight pages, but it's in this format that part of the problem that I have seen, at least for staff and for the board, when these larger projects come through, you just have this criteria A through F. And you end up having to pull pieces out and put them in those spots and figure out how a project complies. Well, we've been talking about taking this type of checklist. And, and even though it's gonna be kind of labor intensive, especially let's say for like a redevelopment project for Thoreau to go through. But each of those criteria are in there. And instead of having just this 12-page narrative letter where you're pulling things out and trying to find them, they're very specific and you can see each of, each element and they have to put in. This is how we've met this criteria. And, and if a waiver is needed, this is why, um, and here's the justification. What that checklist will easily translate into is um, ultimately, um, planning and zoning will be online permitting. And so somebody will be just going online when they file and everything will be, you know, put into that format and they will be able to, you know, fill things out. So for the community and for the board, you, you can specifically see each, each item and have that response there instead of trying to go through and search technical documents or, you know, a 12-page narrative. Um, and each project, each applicant, each lawyer writes things differently. So I think that checklist along with these, you know, really robust rules and regs will make the, the whole review process for staff, the board and the community. Not so much the developer at the front end. But if it's easier to get through the process, it, it makes it easier for everybody in the long run. So that's what I'm, that's what we're hopeful for.
Cool.
Okay, so, so Elizabeth, from here, I, for, for, for tonight, what you're looking for is uh, support from the board in terms of taking these draft plans um, and, and circulating them amongst town staff and seeing if they have input. And then that bringing it back for a May 24th meeting for a, a public hearing on the draft site plans, right?
He, um, what Anne, Amanda and I will do um, over the next, I'm gonna say week, um, is, you know, clean everything, clean everything up um, as far as the format and I'll finish the procedural side of things. Send it out to town staff and um, they can bring it forth to, you know, um, I'm sure, um, you know, maybe it, Public Works or Natural Resources Commission or any other boards and committees. Um, I know Amanda was talking about taking it to CAB and uh, you know, get their, their feedback um, in time for uh, the board. Um, I would send the draft to the board around the 17th of May for your meeting on the 24th. And, and that would just be opening up the public hearing. It's, you know, it's, it definitely, it may not be a, a, a one and done thing, so.
So in terms of, let's say people are sort of on the board tuning in at this point and they, they want, they want to see changes or they, 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 additional sections or whatever it may be in, in the site plan review uh, uh, regs. They, they, would they, you, you, you'll send out what you're saying proposing to be sort of a, a cleaned up draft version for consideration in advance of that May 24th meeting. And so people could weigh in and, and, and have a discussion there about making modifications at that point, adding additional sections, right?
Uh, well, if any of the board members have something specific between, you know, now and let's say, um, you know, a week from now that you want Anne and Amanda and I to, you know, kind of think about and insert. Um, please just, you know, send me an email, your thoughts and ideas and, and we'll run with that at that point.
Okay.
Um, and, and then, I, I mean, any, any time throughout all of this, if you ever, you have a thought or an idea or a question, you know, to, to email me. But then hopefully get comments back from town staff and boards and committees. Um, so that we can send the board the next, um, I'm gonna say this was the incredible rough draft. Um, and the next one would be a much more refined draft, um, like on the 17th to give you a week to look at it before the 24th.
I mean, I, I think that there's a lot in here. I mean, you, you're right, you were going from zero to a lot. Um, but I think we're ready to, to start this formal consideration and, and going through it. But that said, uh, I'm a short timer here. So um, I, uh, I'm just, I, I, I mean, I think that sounds like a reasonable approach and it's a good way to continue to move this forward um, as new, as sort of new business as soon as we're through town meeting. If other people are in favor of that. I see some nodding from Linda um, and Nathan. Do you need anything formal from us, Elizabeth? Yeah.
No, I, I do not. I think, Anne, do you have anything else?
No, I think.
No, no, just really look forward and, and interested to hear any further comments or questions. That would be great.
Thank you, guys. This is, this is huge to, to see this first draft after we've been talking about it for a couple of years. So thank you.
Fifty, fifty years.
Fifty years.
Well, I'll, I'm gonna find out the exact date.
Plus or minus. I've been on the board for three, so that's how long I've been talking. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Elizabeth. I should have started out with that. Thank you, Kate, for making that point. Okay, with that then, so I think that with Elizabeth, you'll go forth. You'll start to solicit town input uh, at the meeting uh, following annual town meeting. This will be uh, likely, uh, unless something, uh, there, something intercedes, we'll be ready for a public hearing to be opened on the 24th of May. Um, okay, that brings us to item four, which is the A and R plan for 1266 monuments.
Uh, no, item, item three was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped, I skipped the air, the architectural review board. Okay, so item three, discussing an architectural review board. For those folks that were paying close attention during uh, the public forum, the public forum that we had on the article 33, the Thoreau Depot. Their suggestion was made at that time by a member of the public um, that what Concord really needs is an architectural review board. And I think this was in dis- uh, around the discussion of our, our, um, our design guidelines that we're, we're rolling out. And wouldn't you know it, that there are other folks in town working on the idea of an architectural review board who were on the Historic Districts Commission. They reached out to me and, and Nathan and I had a discussion with them uh, about that. And, and uh, I will start out by saying, very sensitive to the, the fact that we have a plethora of boards in town and we, we struggle um, to fill them and, and, and to keep their missions focused. Uh, there's something like 36 or 40 boards. And uh, if you go through and, uh, well, the, the, it's hard to get them filled. And so creating another board, why would we do that? Um, there's a couple of differences I want to say in, in terms of what's being proposed here, which is first of all, that this would be sort of an ad hoc uh, a board uh, that would not have regular standing meetings, but it would be at the, sort of at the disposal of the planning board and potentially um, other boards, such as a historic district commission to weigh in on um, design issues. It would, uh, and, and what I think one benefit of that is, is that this board should um, whereas we've had, of course, architects on the planning board before. And sometimes I get the sense that um, they may be, have joined the planning board because they think I'm gonna get to talk about architectural issues, but they end up spending a lot of time talking about things like, I don't know, the site plan, the proposed site plan review regulations. And they were really, and, and this board would allow people who were really focused on architecture, who are, are, are subject matter experts to serve on that. And they would only need to constitute themselves as a board and meet when particular important proposals came forward. And the idea would be that these would be probably a lot of the same things that fall within the site plan review process, right? The, 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 the larger projects in town. Another thing would be is that it would not be a regulatory board per se, but more of an advisory board. So people on the planning board are likely familiar with the West Concord Advisory Committee, which is a uh, subcommittee of the planning board, or not a subcommittee of the planning board, an advisory committee to the planning board. They catch a lot of the issues that are going along in West Concord. They weigh in, uh, they, they, they give be, feedback about projects compliance with the West Concord Design Guidelines and the like. And they, and, and they traditionally would feed a lot of that into the planning board. We haven't seen a lot of that lately, but every once in a while we get a letter. I think the idea with the, it's architectural review board is currently being uh, visioned is that this would be a board that would make recommendations. When the benefit to the planning board would be when we look at some of these projects where we want to talk about design standards, be they in West Concord or perhaps in the future and Thoreau Depot or other places, it's helpful to have people that are experts in the field to say, this makes sense for this reason or, or not, or for that reason, or, or it doesn't make sense for that reason. That's the idea behind it. Um, what's being asked of the planning board at this point? Really nothing except to consider the idea and maybe down the road um, be in favor of it because it would need to be created, you know, by, by town, at town meeting through a, an article presumably. And, and, and to suggest that, yeah, this is something that might benefit the planning board and its deliberations. To be able to, I think of it as a step in the process where maybe somebody's proposing a, uh, a development that otherwise might be going through site plan review. The, the town staff's responsibility might be to say, hey, you gotta talk, if, make sure you send a copy of your application to, you know, so and so, uh, who's the current chair of the architectural review board. They will consider, and then they, the, the architectural review board would meet. They would provide a letter of recommendation or a, a, of one sort or another. And that would go maybe to the planning board and our deliberation. And, and that could even work its way into the site plan review process, you know, in terms of, um, uh, you know, if you're proposing a project subject to site plan review, you'll submit your application to the architectural review board, get their inputs or something like that. I, I, you know, there's a lot of details to be worked out. Nathan, you were, you met as well. Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, that was a, that was an amazing uh, recap of, of the, the uh, sort of idea overall and the conversation um, that we had with them. Um, I do think, and uh, you know, this was mentioned when Burton and I were meeting with them that uh, at some point, potentially in the future, they may make a, uh, a subset of people interested in creating um, that board may make a presentation to, excuse me, to the planning board just to give a better overview of what their, their vision um, of what that board would be and how it would function within the town. I think there, as Burton was mentioning, I think there's a lot of aspects of it that could be um, valuable to the plon- planning board uh, and their deliberations and sort of as a result, the town overall. Um, I, as a personal thing, I, I don't like adding complexity and, and duplicative uh, uh, components that, you know, some other um, boards uh, may already cover or have say on. Um, so that's one kind of aspect of this that I, I would be personally interested in better clarification on just as a mechanics of that board and how it will work. Um, but otherwise, yeah, I think, uh, it was, it's an interesting proposal. I'll say that.
Thanks, Nathan. Um, not, uh, nothing's required from the board at this point, but does anybody have any questions or thoughts or about, are there something that could be, should be pursued? That's Kate.
Um, in terms of adding complexity, I just wanted to kind of drill down on what that means. So it's, it's more work for Elizabeth, more work for the town manager to add a whole nother board. Like what, what does it really mean to, to add another board?
Well, I think first of all, there's the, 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 I mean, there's getting it created. So, so shepherding that process through town meeting, um, you know, as a bylaw, right? Um, you've seen what that process looks like a little bit. Um, uh, uh, right, creating a new, the, 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 the historic, the historic roads bylaw, right? So that, that, that creates a new, these people have to march that through and get that, get that adopted by the town. Then you have the tenant needs to staff, the committee has to find people to, to serve on it. And I think you would generally expect that the people that are promoting the, the passage of that as a bylaw uh, and creating of the committee would, would come up with an initial group of people who would be, fill out their volunteer cards and be on the board. Going forward, it's a matter of, I, I mean, we made the, there's nothing set here, but uh, Nathan and I both made the point to the proponents of this idea that the last thing you want to do is, I said, first of all, none of this can, you don't put anything on the building inspector's plate. They said, yeah, we're not thinking that way. Second of all, don't put anything on Elizabeth's plate, that, you know, that can be avoided. You don't put a burden on town staff. I think the idea here is that it would simply be a, town staff would know if, when somebody brings in an application, it falls within a certain category. This is not a, a re, you know, this is not adding a deck in Concord Center or something. This is a project that, that is, is probably, like I said, probably this site plan review type projects that Elizabeth would be saying, you need to go talk to so and so, the chair that, uh, we're sending this over to the architectural review board because part of the process is they will be either writing a letter of recommendation or having a discussion with you that gets for, that will then be going to the planning board for the planning board's consideration. Or it could be the Historic Districts Commission, you know, there's a lot of unknowns here, right? Um, uh, or Historic District President, whichever, that, that HD, HC, the, the folks that, that oversee what gets built in the historic districts. So um, that's the, the, I think, uh, that is the first priority. I mean, Linda Scobito, who's on, I think, raised that when we started talking about this. It's like, hey, 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 be careful. We don't need more committees in town. And I, I totally understand that. And when I look at the number of committees there are and, and the, uh, the paucity of minutes you see for a lot of those committees, if you, if you go through, you'll notice that, um, you, you'll, you'll realize that we probably have one too many committees or 10 too many committees. Uh, but I think that this is something that's been specifically brought up. Uh, it's what other towns in the area have. And personally, as a member of the planning committee, I felt sometimes uh, like maybe I shouldn't be the ones making aesthetic, weighing in aesthetic. Like, maybe I shouldn't be the ones making aesthetic, weighing in aesthetically on projects. And uh, that, that it would be helpful to have experts, I mean, I miss Alan's presence on the board who, you know. Professor of Architecture, I think he had a different view, he could see things differently than, than I did when we were at, being asked away on particular issues. And I think it would be very helpful to have a sort of a committee of experts like that, and we have, you know, in town, a number of renowned locally, nationally. Internationally architects that, that I think would be interested in serving on this.
Thanks. So, um, to your process side of the question. So whether, whether it's an ad hoc committee or such as, or like the West Concord or an advisory committee like West Concord. The, there will always be a level of staff involvement, there has to be. It, it's. It's far too early to even guess on what that level of staff involvement would be because. So let's say West, we'll take West Concord Advisory Committee, there's definite staff involvement. My admin assistants assist with the, you know, posting of the agendas, um, posting of minutes. Marcia, you know, or I, typically one of us attends those meetings if, you know, there's. Um, a truly planning, you know, planning function on there, which. Usually there always is. Then it gets down to getting the, the right people if the chair is the one that. You know, we would, if an application come in, um, it's a very quick email saying this, you know, application came in. For this redevelopment project, here's the link, it's all been posted to the planning board of this zoning board of appeals webpage, current meeting documents. This is when it's going to be scheduled. Please have your, you know, your advisory committee meet and provide a recommendation. If. That chair will have to know about posting an agenda, somebody's going to have to type the minutes, I can, I can tell you. There is absolutely. No capacity in the planning division to support of any additional boards and committees. Uh, as far as um attending, you know, attending. Meetings, writing minutes, drafting minutes and, and all of that. I, I think when I was with the town back in early, you know, in the nineties, I think we supported. Four boards and I think now we support at least eight, if not nine boards. And there's still only, the only, we've only hired one, one staff person and that's, you know. The senior planner for HDC, the Historical Commission and the CPC. But there are boards and committees out there where the members actually, you know, they draft the minutes and then they send the minutes to us and we get them posted and that's, you know, that's not an issue. Is, it comes down to the timing of things, is this committee, um, let's say they get a project they absolutely hate. And, and they just want to, they keep continuing and continuing and, and a discussion is, you know, how will that play into? The timeline for the actual regulatory um authority board. To the HDC point, you, you can't have an architectural review board and the historic districts commission. So they would not be, you know, you would not have them weigh in for any project that's in the historic district. There generally isn't a lot of large commercial projects, but you, you just, you can't create that type of um architectural conflict. With what the HDC has a jurisdiction for, so it, it has possibilities. So, so, so long as this um architectural review board is Burton said for when you're talking about projects that need site plan review. I am, I, I think there's, you know, possible, you know, room for this. I think architecture in my time as a town planner is always the hardest thing for volunteer boards and committees. Unless you're, you know, unless you're Alan, who, you know, that's what he does. It, it's, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a complicated thing and, and it's something, you know, you have to have expertise in, so I do see that, but. If anybody thinks that I'll stick around, if you want to do like a large house architectural review committee, then that's when I retire. I'm not, I'm not going there.
Elizabeth, you're saying you love the idea, you love the idea.
I, I, I think, I think it, it, there's, there's definite room for conversation of, about it. Um, the mechanics will take a lot of conversation to figure out.
It seems like just my last thing that I'll say, like, it, it seems like the town's getting to the point where, like, if you want to add something else, then you, we need to disband something. In other words, like.
I think that's certainly been the, uh, the message coming from the select board, yeah.
It, it's, oh, sorry Linda, I'm just real quick, but it, it's, it's where. You know, the, it, it's, I, I, I don't, I mean, the only two I can, I can see. I, I mean, I really, I can't, I can't see very many, there's, there's some that. Um, at least you, you can't get rid of the historical commission, you can't get rid of the historic districts commission, you can't get rid of CPC. You can't get rid of ZVA, you can't get rid of the planning board. You have, we support, um, ultimately, I think the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee. Might go away when the project's done. Um, you have two cultural districts and, but those are requirements for all the grants that we receive every year. Um, so we have those two in planning. I mean, I, I'm not sure where else there might be other places, but um at least not in the planning division, I can't see. Um, I, I can't see that happening.
Linda, yes.
I have a question, I, I believe under this site plan review that we're discussing. There's the ability to bring in outside experts. Correct, is that not correct? That the planning board could retain an outside expert to review. X, Y, or Z, is, is that not right, and so why? Why can't we, why isn't that our backup if we don't feel capable of reviewing? Architectural elements in any specific project. Why couldn't you, Elizabeth, advise us that we could retain XYZ consultant? Architecture. Um, brilliant person and, and have them opine. Uh, why, why do we have to set up a separate committee? This, um, to take, you know. To take that, on that role if it's a kind of a one-off situation where we have a unique project where we really need that. That support and backup and, and my understanding is that the applicant would be paying for that.
Right.
Support, so, so I, I, I think that, that we have the ability to, to draw on expertise. Perhaps we just don't use it, um, as, as aggressively as we might. But I, I think to try and set up another committee when it's, it. I don't really understand what the purpose would be other than to provide a free ride to the applicants. Where we don't have to and. And certainly if we had, uh, an architect who, uh, wanted to get involved again with the. Planning board, that, that would be wonderful, but. That's.
So the, um, and, and that definitely, I mean, I, oh. The statute you're talking about is under Mass General Law and it's, you know, we refer to it as fifty-three G. It's the board's ability to hire an outside consultant.
I just. We do that for traffic studies and.
Yep, so, um. And I just, I have to look at the language of Mass General Law to see if, um, architects are in there. And, and that would just be something that I'd want to check, but, um, that's. That's definitely, that's definitely an option. I just, um, I just don't think it's one, everybody usually considers, oh, you know, fifty-three G because there's going to be traffic or stormwater or groundwater and. And. I, I think the architectural side of things kind of gets. Left off. And so maybe.
The subdivisions we look at, the architecture is, you know, there's a little square that's drawn on the plan. And that's like, that's what it's going to look like, you know, we don't see any, anything, but, but, but when we do have a situation like, um. You know, middle sex, we could have asked them to weigh in on the, the design of those houses and whether they should have been white, you know, I, I don't know. But.
And to that point.
The Florida others.
Well, just, I mean, the subdivisions is sort of a separate question because our authority is so constrained under that, that, I mean, and, and we're not approving the designs of buildings. We're approving, right, something different, I, I, I think I, I, what I view it as, and, and I'm very sensitive to the idea of adding additional. Process or procedure, but I'm thinking about, first of all, leveraging the resources we have in town, people that want to weigh in on these things who live in the community. They're not a hired gun that's coming in, um, who might be able to weigh in on things like the design standards we've developed for West Concord. The divide, design standards we've developed for the thorough depot, you know, those, those were done by professional, in the case of the thorough depot. Professional planners in response to public opinion, it would have, it could have been nice to be able to call on a architect, you know, a, a board of. Architectural experts to weigh in on their, their thoughts on those design standards. And then separately, as projects are proposed under the site plan review process, to be able to, to kick them over to a pre-existing named group of individuals. I think that I can imagine this, when I think back of projects we've looked at over the last, uh, um, year. Which ones would have probably been kicked over to the architectural review board, Conference Children's Center, maybe. I'm, I'm trying to think of any others, I mean, it, it's not, it's not many, it's where there's a significant. Proposal for new, new building, you know, that, that is, is likely to have an impact on. You know, the, the, the look and feel of Concord, and you might want people to weigh in on it and, and, and not just. You know, it's interesting, the perspective of the people that are bringing this forward, you currently on the Concord Historical District's Commission. Who are, are saying, well, sometimes you have, um, these decisions being made by folks that are maybe. Non-experts, right, or, or people that who might not be, um, you know, have the same, the same background as somebody who's a practicing architect. And we, we have incredible expertise in town, uh, anyway.
But Burton, doesn't that go for every, like, I don't have expertise on a lot of stuff that, like. Doesn't, why, why is architecture separate from like all the other disciplines that we pass judgment on that we're not necessarily.
Can, can I just jump in for a second on this, so, um, both Linda and now Kate have kind of said something that. From, you know, first hearing about this, one thing that sort of has, you know, played devil's advocate that has worked against it in my mind is. That, you know, I'll, I'll start from this. All the things that we do on the planning board, not all of them are we experts in, or all of them are we excited about necessarily, like really passionate about, right? So, I'm, I think it's great that they want to be involved in the town and they want to, they want to, you know, share their expertise. But in some ways, that outlet already exists and it is the planning board, and so if you want to volunteer, this is, this is one way to do it. And yes, there are other things you're going to do that aren't necessarily going to be your passion project. And I, I'm sure one response would be, well, you know, we're busy people, but we are also busy people. And, and, you know, the other part of it being. Uh, you know, in the proposal that we've heard, it would be made up of experts across a, a number of, of. Areas including like landscape architects and things like that, but I could see somebody saying, oh, well, maybe we actually need a separate landscape. Architecture board to review those as they come through, because it could be separate from architecture as a whole. And, and it's like, at some point, you can't just have people cherry picking the things that they are passionate about or, you know, are experts in. When you have an existing means of, of participating in the community and giving that, that input and feedback. Uh, and we, you know, we, at times we struggle to fill the board and get people with those, those expertise, so. That's one thing I've kind of struggled with, uh, in this idea is, I, I just don't want to have like a different. Tier of, or class of boards where, you know, you just have these experts that are just, when they have time and they're interested and they do it. Uh, and then everybody else just kind of has to do the planning board as they, as it comes to them. So that's, that's one, one thing that sort of works against it in, uh, in my mind.
I don't know if I feel strongly at all about this, but, um, I just was trying to remember somebody's comment. But maybe I'm misremembering, did, did somebody say along the line though, in, in some sort of public comment that most other towns do have this? I just tried to remember, they do.
Um, um, a woman who's currently on the, I think, the, um, I, I don't know if she's on the West Concord. Arts, I, 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 um, wha- what's the district over there?
The West Concord Junction. Cultural District.
Cultural District, she's either on that or she's on the, on the Junction Village Open Space Committee, yeah, and, and is an architect. It, it suggested that most towns in our area have one of these boards, yeah. And that was, that was a comment that she made at our public forum on, on thorough depot, which seemed to resonate with some people in the room.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that the. I know of, 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 a few of the larger. I, I just have not looked into this to, you know, tell you whether it's. You know. How many of those or what towns around us have it?
Yeah, I was just looking at like Lexington's, um, I don't, it's, it's more narrow, um, to your point of Burton of like, well. What, what even like rises to the level of needing something like this, like not everything. That comes before us should and does. So that could just be something to maybe explore.
Kristin, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, my, my concern in addition to, you know, multiple committees and then who has what. Authority or jurisdiction and decision-making power, I guess my concern would be that this would be almost like. Homeowners Association governance overseeing that, I, I would be concerned that it would be too strict. And that, um, we would lose the ability to have uniqueness within the bounds of the design guidelines. And that every project would come out looking the same.
Okay, and, and to be clear, uh, this, this would be, they would be providing a letter of recommendation for a project or providing guidance to a, a particular. Developer as they were going forward. All right, so I'm, I'm not hearing enthusiasm for this idea, um, and, and. At any rate, it will be other people that will be bringing this forward, I'll just leave it with a few thoughts. I, I, I certainly thought joining the planning board would be a discussion, a lot, lots of discussions about architecture. And I, I, I don't actually think that's the case, and I think about when Alan was on the committee. Who was our, our resident architect expert, uh, uh, often wasn't brought into the conversation because that wasn't the focus of what we were talking about. We had a landscape architect who was the chair of the committee, and while she was the chair, this committee really focused. To the benefit of the town on the landscape environment and, and any particular proposal. Um, we talked about, we talked about the caliper of trees, we talked about types of trees, we talked about, I mean, and we got a tree preservation by law, right? Because of focus of the landscape architect really, really brought the attention to the board to that. We look, I look around the board today, we don't have any, um, architects or landscape architects on the board right now. Uh, my expertise is, you know, is just law in general, I, I, I like to think I'm, I'm an architect, but who knows how, if my taste is any good. And I certainly don't have any professional training. I think that being able to leverage the input of people who are, like I said, uh, you know, locally, nationally, internationally renowned architects. Who can, who can speak to a, a developer's architect who will say, well, we've got to do it this way. And they can say, well, I know you don't need to do it that way, you can do it this other way and it'll look a lot better, and I know that because I just built a project that was the other way. Could be really beneficial, and that's all I'll say about that, um, I see a hand raised.
And I would, I would, I would love for somebody like that to submit a green card for the planning board.
Yeah, well, and, well, okay, and, and I, I think, I think that they, that would be great. I, I suspect that there are many people who don't, uh, uh, want to spend their every other Tuesday evening.
That's the problem.
Talking about things like A and Rs, right, or talking about, uh, you know, or, you, you know, uh, the rezoning proposals or what have you. But they could bring a lot of, a lot of expertise.
But they could also always write a comment letter, like, especially like if the chair. But they could also always write a comment letter, like, especially like if the chair, uh, not just you, but and a chair at any given term. Like if they, we know that there's a shortlist of these great people, you know, they can say, hey, can you take a look at this, write a comment letter?
Yep.
When I was on the finance committee, we had a very capable architect on the finance committee, so maybe, maybe we could. Do something there, but.
You reach out to them and see if they could be.
Well, I I.
I see both sides, Bert, and I see your point.
Yeah, what I expect will happen is the folks that are interested in this will look around, you know, the recommendation I said was. Look at what other towns have done. Uh, consider the impact on our town, on our our town staff, consider the impact on our volunteer base and the ability to get green cards together. And 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 at a future date, bring it forward to see if the planning board is interested. That's and and the only reason I wanted to discuss it was to relay the conversation that Nathan and I had had. If they come forward and they say. Lexington and Bedford and Sudbury and and, uh, you know, um, and and Wayland have all done this. And here's the benefit they've gotten, maybe a future board will say, hey, we want to be like the rest of the W towns in, you know, in Metro West. Let's do that. Um, and maybe you'll look at it and say, that's, that's ridiculous. We don't need that additional burden and and you'll move on, but yes.
I think they have to look at, sorry, sorry, I think they'll look at the town planning department, too. Like a lot of other towns seem like they have assistant town planners, so they have more, they might have more capacity. So if they bring that forward, like all these other towns have these, like, also tell us how they manage it.
We have an assistant town planner, or we get, uh, we have that position.
We do.
Elizabeth, what happened to our?
No.
We did, but it's been a while.
No. Um, so what everybody, um, what everybody misunderstands is, um, all the things that. Um, like Marsha does, Marsha's actually the director of the whole entire building. Um, Marsha oversees building, health, natural, same thing as the Public Works Director oversees highway. A park and tree, water and sewer. Marsha's this, at the same level as the Public Works Director. Um, then there's me as the division manager. So there's myself, Delia, Ray. Um, and then the Public Health Director, we're division managers. Um, I have two admin assistants and one senior planner.
I was thinking of the senior planner.
Okay, yes, so, um, yes, Heather Gill, uh, and and she is specifically a hundred percent. Allocated to HDC Historical Commission and CPC.
Yeah, okay. Sue, I see, uh, I'm sorry, Linda, you've got a.
I was just gonna add one thing, which is it it may be difficult, possibly difficult to attract a architect who's very active in Concord to. Want to be on this committee or want to be on the planning board just because. Um, of of potential conflicts or concerns about potential conflicts. Um, from that point of view, and that perhaps that's, that's a reason we don't have anyone on this board. Um, other than, you know, Alan, I get, I don't know how active he was versus his.
He wasn't doing projects in town except for his own house. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Sue.
Hi, Sifelshin nineteen centi sideline, but but I do want to overhaul the zoning bylaw, and I would even approve A and Rs. However, on the topic of this um proposed board, in addition to everything that everyone has said. Um, I found myself asking this whole time. One person's brilliant architecture is the next person's horrifying monstrosity. And I wonder if a board like this would either turn into, um, let's keep Concord eighteenth century. Or whether it would slew from one end to the next, depending on who happened to volunteer to serve on it. And I also have some things I could add from having been on the West Concord Task Force when we were developing the West Concord Design Guidelines. But uh, it's late and I don't think I'll comment, both, both good and bad, but. Boy, this seems like a difficult proposition is my only comment.
Thanks very much for that input, Sue. All right, um, we've, I think, dredged dredged over that plenty. Uh, shall we now move to our item four and five, our A and R plans for the evening? The first one being number twenty-two dash one twelve sixty-six Monument Street Parcels thirteen seventy-seven. Elizabeth, you want to run us through that?
Is that zoomed enough for everybody to see?
Yeah, I I can certainly see that just fine.
See if I can zoom in a little bit more. Okay, um, Monument Streets, Balls Hill Road, uh, twelve sixty-six. Um, and this is a proposal just to divide off this back lot. Which will have more than two hundred feet of frontage along Balls Hill Road, which is a public way. Uh, each lot has over eighty thousand square feet, um, and over fifty percent Oakland.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about those facts on the ground as presented by Elizabeth? If not, I then I would like to make a motion to endorse uh the plan by Stamsky and McNary. Titled the Plan of Land Concord, Massachusetts for Canty, dated April fourth, twenty twenty-two, as approval not required because plan is not a subdivision. Because it shows the division of land so that every lot shown has the required frontage, as required by the zoning by law. And and on an adequate public way and that I either myself, the clerk or town planner can be authorized to endorse the plan.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Nathan. Then I will go to a um, a a vote, uh, so starting with Linda.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and I think I got everybody.
Nope, you didn't give me, I'm a yes.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
The screen's presenting, I have lose track of you in the meeting. All right, okay, so we are unanimous on that A and R. And then if we want to next go to the A and R for twenty-two dash two seventeen oh two and seventeen ten Lowell Road, Parcs fifteen thirty-four and fifteen thirty-five.
Um, okay, Lowell Road, um, as you can see, you know, right up here, this is towards Carlisle Line, this is Barkis Farm. Um, and these are two existing lots, and they are swapping this little nine hundred and ninety-eight square feet. This part will go towards seventeen ten, and this part right here will go towards seventeen oh two. And I believe the land swap is to accommodate this existing driveway.
Okay.
So it is an even conveyance between the two property.
It looks like it will almost accommodate that existing driveway, but.
Almost.
Yeah, for whatever reason, um, and make the lots a little closer to being rectangular.
Well, I can, I can tell you why it's, it's almost, almost, um. Because of the, it has to maintain this width.
Right.
All the way across.
Gotcha. Um, all right, would anybody, is anybody else excited to make this motion or would? Shall I go forth? All right, I'm gonna move that the planning board endorsed the plan by Stamsky and McNary Inc. titled Plan of Concord of Land Concord, Massachusetts for Town. They did April fourth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, as approval not required because plan is not a subdivision, because it shows a proposed conveyance, which changes the size and shape of the lots in such a man. Uh, at such a manner that frontage is not affected and authorized. Yes.
Yeah, no, it's, it should be same manner, not manager.
But Mike, I've got it for the.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, such a manner that frontage is not affected and authorize myself, the clerk or town planner to endorse the plan. Again, this one's, thank you, Kristen. I was worried this one wasn't gonna get through. All right, uh, let me start with Kate.
Yes, yes.
Nathan.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
And myself, I mean, this may be the last A and R I vote on, and they always drive me crazy because why are we approving something that doesn't require approval? But I will approve it gladly. All right, um, that brings me to uh. Number six, any uh general liaison or town planner updates?
Um, I have, I have two updates, uh, one. Um. We're talking about myself and um a couple other staff members are talking about filing for a. A executive office of environmental and. E E A, uh, one of the state agencies for a grant to assist with. Um, taking the initial M A P C study that they did on our parking requirements. Um, and furthering that study to actual amendment, proposed amendments to our parking requirements. Um, and doing a study on actually change, you know, drafting um potential. Bylaw amendments to the parking requirements. So that's a grant that we're looking at possibly doing.
So that would be a grant coming from whom? And then who would we be engaging on their services?
Um, so I'm not, um, so the the grant comes through.
That's that State Department, you mentioned that.
Yes.
Titles, okay.
Um, and I think it's a grant that, you know, we get the funds to hire a consultant to assist with overhauling that. So I, we would be looking specifically for, um, you know, a a transportation planning agency to assist with doing that.
So that's exciting and overdue.
Um, the other exciting piece of news is that it, um, that we may be able to get additional funds. Um, to assist with furthering one other aspect of the Asabet River Bridge. Um, and that's the surveying and um plan compiling for the. The actual, I'm gonna say, the approach from the commuter rail parking lot to the actual bridge. And so I may be able to get funds um to have that grant funds to have that done. Um, not sure, but um, I'm, I'm pretty hopeful that we can get that. So, um, you know, that's around like seventy-five thousand dollars to, uh, to have that done. So that's pretty exciting. At least for me.
That is exciting, though. I am curious because I I know you sort of the extent of the planning for the bridge, I know the extent of the parking lot. Isn't that a pretty short putt between the parking lot and the bridge?
Oh, um, so what I didn't, um, oh, sorry, um, yeah, my brain's all over the place. So it would be the surveying, the compiling, um, and then doing the plans. Um, and then also having the architect and the engineer. Take that information along with where they are with the bridge and doing two public forums.
Okay, all right.
Um, so currently, um, the, the consultant and the architect, they're at the. Um, bridge selection phase where they get to this point where it's, it's not quite twenty-five percent. And you have to provide your, your alternative analysis and bridge designs. And how you got to your bridge selection for the bridge you want to build, all of that gets sent to Mass D O T. Uh, and they have ninety days to review and comment. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
So, um, but they can work on this other piece, and at least we can have, start having the public forum on the bridge selection. And from when the board remembers the conceptual um to where they're at now, um, it's. It's pretty, it's pretty neat. They have done some three D modeling now, and so it's pretty exciting.
That's, that is terrific. That is a project that. Will be amazing if and when it comes together um with construction.
We, we won't be going to um for construction until the cost of materials goes down, I can tell you that.
Is there a process? Is there a process to get that into the tip, like, I mean.
Yes, we, we've already started that process. Um, the project's been submitted to the, through the state for their project notification process. Um, and then so it goes to uh, um, project notification to project selection to the tip.
Right.
But even then, um, the consultants just informed us that steel has gone from like four dollars a linear foot to um close to eleven.
I think we should build it out of stone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably be cheaper.
We certainly have enough in the ground here.
Yeah, you look like Prague. Um, okay, um, anybody else have any, any uh updates? Or uh from the various committees, they may be liaison groups, they may be liaison liaising with. No. Okay, um, then that will bring us to, we don't, we didn't have any minutes tonight, so I think that brings us to. Uh, uh, whether there might be any public comments, we've got some folks in the room, if or in the in the virtual room. If anybody has any public comments, please raise your hand, and I'd be happy to, I give you the opportunity to ask a question or make a comment. All right, we've already heard Sue. Hey, Linda, I see you've turned on your.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um. Always interesting discussions. Uh, is it, so thank you, I first want to thank you, though, for taking, being willing to take a position on. Articles twenty-four and twenty-five, and um I do appreciate the viewpoint in terms of. The planning board trying to address. As Linda so well said, uh, the balance between. Um, open space and and um our housing goals in terms of what we're trying to accomplish in town. So thank you for that, and um I just hope that you'll all be able to attend town meeting. Because I think your voices are gonna need to be heard.
I'm gonna skip it this year, Linda, but um.
You are.
Oh, you're not.
I'm not, I'm not.
No, you're not.
I I will be there.
Which, uh, just a reminder, I have, um, Kate, I mean, Kristen, thank you for about your presentation. Um, Linda, I don't think you had any other comments on your presentation. Um, and then, so Burton, if you can just send me yours by uh this Friday. So I can send it in.
Okay, I I I'm gonna. It's the nineteenth, okay, boy, time flies. I I'm gonna grab some time with you uh in the next couple of days. Elizabeth.
Okay.
I'll reach out to you directly. All right, um, and I don't see anybody besides Linda with her hand raised. Thank you, Linda, for uh your support and.
And thank you to all of you for everything everyone's doing.
All right, um, with that, I think we're good for, is our next meeting, we do we have?
Town meeting, I think.
And so then, right before town meeting, if it's required, but otherwise, we're just going to town meeting?
Correct.
All right.
And and town meeting is at one o'clock until we're done. And then to be subsequent days, I just haven't seen anymore. Have you heard anything else? Because wait, are people presenting that are not on the consent calendar?
People are presenting that are not on the consent calendar, yes. And I think that the idea, Linda, keep me honest, I think we're good, we're going in, but there'll be no new. Articles after a particular time, and it may go into a second day if necessary, right?
I think in most, there will be a second day.
Yeah.
And and what's the second day? Is it like Monday evening, whatever?
Starting at seven.
Okay.
Seven in the morning on Monday.
That would be, that would be ideal.
It would be spectacular, yeah.
Wow, I really thought that we would have kind of, I I think the last couple of town meetings were. Efficient, and so I was kind of surprised that we weren't gonna hold on to that more.
And are we likely to be on that second day, our articles? Do we?
It would not surprise me.
Okay.
Um, I mean, it be, in front of us is always the big things of the school committee, or the school budgets. And um, there's the CPC Asabet Bluffs. Um, I mean, Linda, is your sense that you think we'll probably get to the the thirties on day two?
I think so, um, yeah, because Articles twenty-five and twenty-six minimally are being taken out of order. And will definitely be on Monday, and so that will add to the length of the discussion on on Sunday. I mean, that will add to the length of discussion on Sunday.
Okay.
But pushing the other articles to Tuesday.
Or to Monday.
No.
Sorry, Sunday, Monday, I'm, yeah, sorry, there's so much going on right now.
You're thinking about the good old days when it was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right, exactly.
I think, I think being outside with a threat. I think, I think being outside with the threat of a sunburn really sped things up.
That's what I'm saying. I feel like we were very efficient.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll see you Monday on the first, everybody, in person, in the gym. All right.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.